Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular meeting of Fernie City Council held on November 25th, 2025, Kisukukit. We acknowledge that the city of Fernie is located within Kukanamakis, the unceded territory of Yakadatnupleet First Nation. We recognize that we live and work within their vast lands. Akanahunik are from Yakadatnupleet and are members of the Tanaha-speaking peoples of British Columbia, Idaho, and Montana. And before I call the meeting to order, I just wanted to thank Counselor Nixon, which I neglected to do at Committee of the Whole for covering for me when I was away for two weeks in November, very much appreciated. It was a great time away, and I'm sorry I missed attendance at the Senataf here, which is always important to me, but my wife and I took the opportunity to attend at the National Senataf in Ottawa, which was pretty impressive, especially when the Black Hawk helicopter did a flyby, which we should ask for. With that, I'll call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM. And I'll ask for a mover and a seconder that the agenda of the November 25th, 2025 regular meeting be adopted. Moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor McCasick. Is there any discussion? I do have one discussion point, sorry. No, I know, that's okay. So what I'm gonna ask is that, well, as council is aware, we have a fairly serious matter between ourselves and the Fernie Chamber of Commerce, specifically with regards to their treatment of a long-serving city of Fernie employee. And so I will move to amend the agenda to postpone the consideration of Agenda Item 11.5, the partnering agreement, to extend visitor services until such time as we reach a satisfactory resolution to this matter. Please. Microphone.
Thank you. Should part of that consideration be the appointment for a liaison as well?
I think we can proceed with that.
Okay.
But this other matter, I think we should resolve it before we get ahead. So I'll ask for a seconder. Counselor Nixon, any further discussion? So I will call the question on the amended agenda. All those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you, and ask for a vote on the agenda as amended, the main agenda.
No, the first vote was on the amendment.
Yeah. Amended agenda, moved by, yeah, moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor Audia Kelly. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Now I'll ask for a mover and a seconder for Item 4.1, that the minutes of the November 12th, 2025 regular meeting be adopted. Moved by Counselor Audie Kelly, seconded by Counselor Hamilton. Any discussion? All those in favor? Apologize, I've got my agenda out of order here. I don't appear to have my public participation script. Because it's not there. No, no. Thank you. And sorry, I just, I do need to read from the script because it has to be procedurally accurate. So I'll invite the public in attendance or participating electronically who wish to comment on items listed on the meeting agenda in accordance with Section 3.7.3 of the Procedure Bylaw to address council, except speakers must not address council regarding a matter for which a public hearing must be held or has been held pursuant to Local Government Act prior to council's consideration of the matter or adoption of the bylaw. Speakers must not address council regarding a permit for which public notice must be given or has been given pursuant to the Local Government Act prior to council's consideration of issuance of the permit. A speaker may only address council for a maximum of three minutes. And speakers are asked to state their full name and community of residence. Now, first look to our gallery, is there anybody who wishes to speak? No? And online, is there anybody indicated desire to speak? Thank you, seeing none. We'll move on to Item 10.1, the adoption of the Business Licensing Regulation Bylaw. There's no report, as this has had three readings, and of course, it's in your council package. So I'll ask for a mover and a seconder for the following staff recommendation, that Council dot business licensing, Business Licensing and Regulation Bylaw Number 2028, 2006 Amendment Bylaw Number 2539, 2025. Moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor Audie Kelly. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Now on to Item 10.2, Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 2231, a report from our manager of planning, Mr. Simulini.
Thank you, worship, just a moment while I share screen. There we go, good evening, your worship and council. Just wanted to come forward tonight to speak to the Housing Needs Report and Official Community Plan Bylaw Amendment related to Bill 44, as well as some of the supplementary documents that have been produced with that document moving forward. That being the Public Engagement Round One summary and the Housing Needs Report itself, as well as the Communications and Engagement Plan that was presented to council previously has now been finalized. The reason that we're bringing those reports forward tonight to, for council to see is so then we can publish them publicly as final documents so we can then retroactively claim the funding that the province awarded us related to the small-scale multi-unit housing legislation. And that needs to be done before the end of the year. So we've completed that work, it's nice and tied up now. And once, once council has it on the agenda tonight, we'll be able to put a funding request in to get back the budget that was dedicated towards those parts of the project. So just I want to go over the engagement summary quickly. In early September, the consultant V3 Planning came down and met with council in a workshop, met with staff, task force members. We also held a public open house and had a community partners workshop, and also a survey went out. Largely, a couple of themes came forward from that. What we wanted to see in the OCP as a community in general, there were infrastructure concerns, sewer and water, as well as housing concerns, and both of those obviously are related. As well, there was talk about the OCP itself being, the one that we have now, being a fairly detailed document and fairly usable, but at the same time, having some redundancies and wanting to clean those up and shorten the document, make it a little bit more user-friendly. We also, on September 2nd, Mayor Milligan and I attended YQT council meeting to present the project to Yakadatnupleet. Was well received and will continue to communicate with them as well moving forward. And an online survey went out for the month of September that received 273 responses. I think another important point with the engagement summary is it told us what we heard, but it also allowed us to do an assessment on what we didn't hear. And for example, we didn't have a lot of youth involvement in the survey response. And a lot of respondents to the survey and to the engagement were homeowners in Fernie. So it kind of gave us an idea of the demographics that we want to touch on with round two of engagement. And so that'll allow us to gear round two engagement towards some of those groups to get a more well-rounded response in moving forward with drafting the OCP. So with that, I've brought forward the Official Community Plan Amendment tonight. It's based on the Housing Needs Report. So Bill 44 from the province required us to amend our zoning bylaws. We did that back last year to allow for small-scale multi-unit housing. As council may recall, the residential small-scale zoning, which allowed up to four dwelling units per previously single-family residential lot. That was a success, and we haven't seen a lot of uptake on it yet, but nonetheless, we did meet the requirements of the zoning. Now, retroactive to that, the province has required us to update our official community plans to allow for the zoning. Typically, you would see an official community plan be amended first, but again, as per the province's legislation, we sort of did a little bit backwards in this case. Also, we did a Housing Needs Report update. As council may remember, in December of 2024, we brought forward a brief memo that went over the numbers, in very brief form, as a primer to the overall Housing Needs Report. But this Housing Needs Report that we have had V3 do for us is much more detailed. So it actually looks at the numbers, 551 dwelling units are required in the next five years, and over 1,800 dwelling units required in the next 20 years. So in order to accommodate for those units, what we need to do is, in our OCP, explain where those units are going to be and what types of units they're going to be. So the OCP amendment goes over those, and again, establishes how we're going to get to those units in a very high-level sense. The Housing Needs Report also touched on some crises in Fernie, affordability crisis. For example, average single-family home being $850,000, which is a 53% increase from five years ago. And, sorry, excuse me, a vacancy rate of functionally zero of 0.5%. It also looked at vulnerable groups in Fernie, being seniors, women-led households, visible minorities, and people with disabilities. And calculated a shadow population of 30%. Now, we've been working with this number of 25 to 30% since I started with the city. So this is, is nothing new, but it does tell us that 30% of the homes in Fernie are not occupied by full-time residents. The Housing Needs Report also touched on some of the projects that we've done in the last few years, ones that are ongoing and some that are complete. For example, North End Court on 13th Street, and the Fernie Family Housing Society, or Elk Valley Family Society Housing Project on 692 Third Avenue, currently being constructed. Housing Needs Report also told us what we need to accelerate moving forward. So missing middle housing is a very important point. Missing middle being those that aren't necessarily looked at as being in a crisis, but they are, that's sort of transitional housing where you want to raise a family and you don't have the opportunity to buy something big enough for you, for example. Also, extreme core housing need. Extreme core housing need is those whose income, 50% of their income is spent on their rent. So we're looking at needing to produce 71 extreme-core housing units in the next 20 years.
Sorry, Mr. Simulini, based on your earlier comment, those 71 units, are they more focused on seniors and vulnerable populations, or is, sorry?
Your worship through the council, extreme-core housing need can span across demographics. It's just, it's just the number based on if you, if your housing costs more than 50% or 50% or more of what you're making, you're considered in extreme-core housing need. So, yeah, so I mean, if you're, if you're a senior, for example, and your fixed income, fixed income is coming in, you're spending 50% of that on wherever you live, you're considered in extreme-core housing need.
Counselor Audia Kelly?
Thanks, your worship. Just for the folks who are listening and may not have been aware of some of the housing needs, where the numbers derived from, Manager Simulini, the province has enacted legislation that municipalities were, had to follow, and we have met all the targets. But could you just maybe refresh people's memories on where the 551 number came from?
Yes, your worship through the council, the province provided a tool. It was the same tool that all other communities across the province use. So that number was generated through that tool. So the consultant didn't come up with any sort of calculations to get to those numbers. The calculations are consistent across the province and legislated. So what the Housing Needs Report did is took those numbers and did an analysis on them to actually tell us what they mean and how to amend our OCP accordingly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor McCasick?
Thank you, worship. I'm sorry, I wanted to delve just a little bit into the units for extreme-core housing, 71 units. Does that mean the creation of 71 units for which those people who are now spending 50% of their net income in housing would be then spending, I think the normal number that they expect is 30%, roughly, of your net income? So does that mean that there would be built at a price point that those same people could afford with 30% of their net income instead of 50? Is that the goal?
Through the council, I believe that's the goal, and it doesn't necessarily mean that the 71 people who are in extreme-core housing need are going to be in extreme-core housing need 20 years from now.
Right.
But it's just a number that tells us, you know, this is where we need to get to. We need to produce about this many units.
Right.
And to your point, Counselor McCasick, extreme-core housing need and core housing need are similar definitions. Core housing need is between 30 and 50%, and extreme-core housing need is above 50 or 50 or above.
Gotcha.
Whereas anything under 30 is considered affordable.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, carry on.
The Housing Needs Report also aligns new housing with active transportation, with the Active Transportation Plan for complete communities.
And sorry, what does that mean for us? Because that, I know there's, in larger centers in the province, there is incentive to put housing close to transit. So what does that mean in terms of our housing?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. So the province, in areas where public transportation is readily available, larger centers mainly, the legislation is a little bit different. So it actually required those communities to produce for up to six dwelling units per lot, with the thought being that because those people are close to transportation, they don't necessarily need vehicles and you need space to be able to park vehicles. So four versus six. In this case, the Active Transportation Plan that we have in Fernie is a little bit different than that. It just looks at the plan that we currently have for active transportation, using bicycles, walking, things like that, and brings that into context with where some units can go. So for example, that the existing parcel fabric is very conducive to active transportation because it's close, whereas the outlying areas may or may not be.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
So there's a quick breakdown of the numbers there in front of you. The five-year need and the 20-year need. So again, across different demographics, what types of housing units are going to be needed? And then, this is a conceptual map that looks at some of the vacant land. Again, this is a snapshot, so there may be some changes to this. And this isn't going to be included in the actual OCP document, but it just gives an idea of the areas in town that we can look at to produce housing units in the future. And again, the ones that you see in red there, with the exception of maybe the Cedars, would be sort of those active-transportation network ones that are close to those hubs.
Counselor Ramadas?
Thanks, your worship. Those red areas, like what are they zoned at this point in time? I'm sure there are different zoning, but majority, which ones are they zoned?
Yeah, through to Counselor Ramadas, the majority of those would be zoned, the RSS zone. So they would be formerly single-family or duplex lots that are now zoned for up to four units. So this table that is in front of you is a maximum build-out scenario. Obviously, we're not going to see this, but to help to satisfy what the province was asking for, it shows that we can produce up to, if we were to build out completely, we can produce up to 6,001 units, which is well over the 1,800 units that's required as per the Housing Needs Report.
Counselor Ramadas?
Thanks, your worship. Just for people's knowledge here, manager, can you remind us, like, what's our current build-out rate in town?
The, sorry, through the council, the current build-out rate in town, I mean, if you're to look at like the RSS zone properties right now, we typically have one to two dwelling units per lot. So traditionally, you'd have a house and maybe a secondary dwelling unit in the form of a basement suite or a garage suite. We haven't seen a lot of uptake on anything beyond that to this point. So I would say like, if you were to take an average number, it might be like 1.1 units per single-family lot now. So it would be adding up to 2.9 units per lot if you're to, to take, to get to that number, yeah.
Further?
So essentially, we need to increase our rate by three times to meet those numbers?
Yeah, your worship through the council around us, that's correct. But I mean, those numbers are, like, that's again, looking at, all of a sudden, we're going to 6,000 units where the Housing Needs Report is telling us we only need 1,800. So, so we don't, that's just a maximum build-out scenario if every single, single-family lot in Fernie had 400. And we understand that that's not going to be the case. So the numbers actually do, and a couple of slides here, the numbers actually do get into the more of a realistic build-out scenario. Yeah. So I believe that this table is looking at the more realistic scenario, where we'd actually be looking at potentially 2,100 lots as opposed to, or 2,100 dwelling units as opposed to 6,000. And I apologize, your worship, I'm struggling. I usually use the screen to look at the TV, but there's a huge snowflake in front of it. And then my screen down here, my screen down here has zoomed over half of my presentation, so I'm trying to read through it.
We'll have to talk to the seniors. He's not referring to me, is he?
No. You're not in front of the TV, your worship. So further, further Counselor Ramadas' question, what we did is we assumed a 5% conversion of existing single-family detached dwellings into multifamily dwellings. That gave us 162 units within sort of the developed parcel fabric. That's for lots that currently have homes on them. And then we looked at some vacant lands within that fabric. That gives us 224 units. But then we also looked at the development of the outerlying areas, the undeveloped neighborhoods such as Montane. And that took us to a total of 2,100 units when you consider all three together, so, yeah. So a key to the OCP is that the Housing Needs Report has told us how many units we need and sort of where we need them, but now we need to put some policy into place to move forward with. There's two components to the OCP amendment for this specific amendment. One of them is actually taking language out of the OCP or changing language in the OCP so that it's consistent with the zoning. So most of the amendments in the bylaw are just text amendments to existing policies that talk about things like R1B zoning, which isn't a thing anymore, or encouraging people to have a suite in their home. Obviously, we want to encourage that, but we also want to encourage four units, not just two. So just an amendment to bring that, the zoning and the OCP together. And then a larger part of that is some actual, an actual section in the OCP that speaks to the Housing Needs Report and how we're going to get there. And that's, and that's the section that's attached to the bylaw as a schedule.
Counselor McCasick?
Thank you, worship. I wanted to ask sort of probe a little bit about your use of the word encourage. I'm wondering, within the OCP, while we're making the amendments to reflect the province's desires for our build-out, the fact that we want to encourage certain types of buildings are, is the intention to include, and not specifically in the text, zoning text, for example, but aspirational language associated with that? Like, is that, are we hearing that from like our community working group or part of the surveys? And is there an anticipated direction that we're gonna put in there? Or is this gonna come back to council for that discussion? Or I wonder if you could talk about that a bit?
From, sorry, your worship through to Counselor McCasick, from a broader perspective of the overall OCP, I mean, those are things that we can discuss with the overall OCP process, which will be ongoing until 2027. And when I say the word encourage, I'm mostly referring to the language that was removed from, from the bylaw, where it said to encourage secondary suite development. Or, for example, now the, one of the policies in the OCP doesn't, doesn't use the word encourage. It just says, permit up to a maximum of four dwelling units per lot in areas where four full pipe municipalities, sewer and water are available in accordance with provincial legislation. So it's more direct, as opposed to, we're gonna permit it, we're not going to encourage it, but if you want to do it, you have the opportunity to do that.
So, thank you for that explanation.
Now, sorry. So the, so the overall, again, the overall amendment that's attached to the OCP will go into our current OCP as presented. And then it's worth noting that, again, we're redoing our entire OCP. So that language and the formatting and everything will, will eventually be changed to roll into the new OCP as well. So a quick conclusion, again, Bill 44 required us to do two things to our OCP. One of them was to have approximate location amounts, types of density, and how we are going to meet those goals. So that language has changed that, again, those tables and the neighborhoods show that. And then, again, accommodate for that affordable housing, rental housing, and then special-needs housing, which the policies in the OCP amendment accommodate for that as well. So the requirements have been met, and with adoption of the bylaw, eventually we'll be able to move forward and meet the legislation deadline.
Thank you, Counselor Ramadas.
Thanks, your worship. Where here did we address how we are going to get there? You know, that was one of the preconditions of Bill 44, right, as you mentioned. So is there, have we put it in language as to how we will get to these targets?
Yeah, your worship through to Counselor Ramadas. I think the how in that sense is the policies in the bylaw that say to permit these dwelling units. So it's not, yeah, it's not, it's, again.
It's a policy statement that we were, we are making.
That's, yeah, that's correct, yeah. And again, we investigate the how in more detail with our policies moving forward, with our overall OCP amendment. But there is no silver bullet here, so to speak, right? Where we can get the housing to go, I mean, permitting it and moving forward with it and having it in our policies is the how, I guess, is the way to put it.
This is more about creating the conditions that allow it to happen.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Audie Kelly?
Thanks, your worship, yeah, because we're assuming demand based on a provincial formula, right? And that demand may not be an actual demand.
Yeah, that's correct, your worship through to council. And another important note with that is that the province is requiring us to update our Housing Needs Report periodically. Though it's, it's not, we're not necessarily married to that 1,800 units over the next 20 years. Like, as we update our Housing Needs Report, it may tell us different. That number may go up or down. And amendments to the OCP in the future are required accordingly.
Other questions or comments? Just a couple of quick ones for me. Just a timeline question. There was the technical memo that you mentioned that we, and that was also a requirement. Like, that was essentially a placekeeper we submitted to the province to allow us to complete this work for the end of this year, is that correct?
Yes, your worship, that's correct. So the timeline from the province was to have our zoning amendment done for residential small-scale housing or small-scale multi-unit housing by, I believe it was the end of the summer, so to by, I believe it was the end of the summer, so it's around there. We, we finished that and then was to have the house, an amendment to the housing needs reporter and a housing needs report update done by December twenty twenty-four, which was that technical memo that was attached to the existing housing needs report. So this housing needs report wasn't, there was no timeline on getting it done, but we needed the information in it to update our O C P by the end of twenty twenty-five with the deadline for the reports.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And one question about the O C P, you, you talked about tightening it up, I guess, was your language, remove any redundancies. And this has been a trend with legislation sort of across the provinces. Is there going to be an effort to have sort of as a plain language document so that, that you know, the general public can understand it's not fully a technical document?
Yeah, Your Worship, that's, that's at the forefront. So that's been, that's been discussed. And I know at the council session we had, we talked about an O C P on a page or just sort of a a really, you know, brief overview of, of the vision of the O C P and, and some key points. So those will be, those will be things we'll produce either with the consultant or as staff as, as the O C P continues to develop.
Awesome. Thank you. With that, I will ask for a mover and a seconder for the following staff recommendation. That council give first and second readings to Amendment Bylaw Number twenty-five forty to amend the City of Fernie Official Community Plan Bylaw Number twenty-two thirty-one to incorporate the findings of the City of Fernie Housing Needs Report twenty twenty-five into the city's official community plan. Moved by Counsel Ramadas, seconded by Counsel Nixon. A further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Simolee. Removes us on to item eleven point one and a couple of reports, I think, back to back from our corporate officer.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just gonna share a screen here. While we're sharing our screen, I just thought I would start my report. My report does not have a visual presentation today, but I'm going to put up the council meeting schedule for twenty twenty-six. Staff would like to bring forward the proposed twenty twenty-six regular council meeting schedule and to provide council with an opportunity to review it and offer any feedback before it is published. Adoption of this schedule is required by December the thirty-first in order to meet our legislative obligations under the community charter. Each year, council must make its schedule of regular meetings available to the public. And our schedule also includes committee of the whole meeting date as well as major conferences that council typically attends. For twenty twenty-six, regular council meetings are scheduled for the second and fourth Tuesday of each month at six thirty P M. And committee of the whole meetings are scheduled for the third Tuesday at the same time in accordance with our council procedure by law. The schedule also incorporates the major conference dates, including L G L A Forum in March, A K B L G in April, F C M in June, and the U B C M Convention in September. Because twenty twenty-six is a local government election year, the schedule also reflects several election-related requirements. The general local government election will be held on October the seventeenth, twenty twenty-six. And the inaugural meeting of the newly elected council will take place on November third, twenty twenty-six. Although it is not listed in the formal schedule, orientation for the new council will occur throughout November twenty twenty-six, and those details will be shared later on in the year. I also want to note that the public participation period will be suspended from April seventeen, twenty twenty-six to November seventeen, twenty twenty-six as required by the procedure by law. During this time, public participation will be removed from all council and committee agendas. The schedule includes a mid-year break in July and August with one regular meeting and one committee of the whole meeting in each of those months to allow for some flexibility. In September, due to the U B C M Convention, there will be no committee meetings, sorry, committee of the whole meetings, and instead, two regular council meetings. In October, only one regular meeting is scheduled prior to election. No meetings are scheduled between the meeting, that meeting and the inaugural meeting in November. Lots of meetings. Finally, in December, one regular meeting and one committee of the whole meeting are proposed to accommodate the holiday schedule. Once the schedule is adopted by council, it will be shared through public posting places at City Hall and the board opposite the post office. It will be published in two editions of the Fernie Free Press and posted on the city's website and Facebook page. We will also continue to publish monthly reminders throughout the cities, through the city's weekly page in the Fernie Free Press. Council has two options today. We, sorry, you may adopt the twenty twenty-six council meeting as scheduled as presented, or you may direct staff to make amendments and then adopt the revised version at a later date. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, observations from council? Seeing none, I will ask for a mover and a seconder for the following recommendation, that council adopt the regular council meeting schedule for twenty twenty-six attached to this report. Moved by Counsel Hamilton, seconded by Counsel Ramadas. Discussion? Counsel Ramadas?
Thanks, Your Worship. Officer, can you remind us why we have from April till October, no public participation for people on the call here? I know it's on in the procedure.
It is in the procedure by law. I don't have historical context as to why it was.
I'm guessing it's got to do something with the elections, but.
I think, I, I believe so. I believe so. I would like to turn to the C A O in case he has any additional information.
When the council procedure by law was first redeveloped, it was added in just to address potential campaigning at council meetings. Noted by our communications manager, it's not entirely standard, but that's because it's not entirely standard to have or not to have public participation at the beginning or at the end. Those are very much not, you know, those are very much like à la carte council by council options. So my recollection at the time it was first brought in was that a buffer period was put in, in the run-up to the election to stop individuals from running, from then using council meetings to, to campaign and platform.
Further discussion? Yep.
But it comes at a cost, right, Your Worship? It's just that what's the mechanism for public to actually engage with the council during this period? Like, I know we'll be making decisions still between October and, and the election time. Is there going to be any kind of a platform for folks if they want to engage with us? Would be my question.
Yeah, it's a fair question. Is there potentially notification that goes out and provides or reaffirms the, makes available council email, reaffirms and, and the schedule for the council cafe, things that will continue during that period that allow people access to council?
Your Worship, I think what we can do is ensure, if that's a concern, that we republish and, and, and broadcast all of the opportunities for the community to directly engage with council outside of the recurring public meetings of council and committee of the whole. Specifically, that discussion around whether public participation continues or does hit pause is separate, I would just note, from the calendar in front of you at the moment. And I would recommend that council have that discussion as it relates to the council procedure by law. Specifically, as the meetings and their dates and times are what we do need to adopt before the end of the year specifically. And I'm not trying to dampen the, the conversation, but just remind council, this is specifically about the calendar.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Did you have further counsel, Counsel Ramadas?
Just to be clear, Your Worship, I completely understand. I don't want councilors to be running an election platform from April to October. I see the, I see the value behind having this, this this language in the procedure by law. It's just that we need to be careful to not reduce the opportunities for citizens to engage with us. That's all my point is. And to your point, Your Worship, I know there is council cafe and all those things, but those are all still non-official engagements. This is an official engagement and there will be decisions we'll be making between April and October. And I still would like some kind of a way for regulars, for citizens to be able to engage with us.
Yeah.
In an official fashion, not, not just council cafe.
Understood. Yeah. Counsel McKaisak?
Thank you, Worship. I was just thinking, because the, I, I, I believe that that particular restriction was put in with good intention in order to ensure that the public input period is, pertains to the agenda and all that stuff and not, doesn't become an election platform. But I wonder if, instead of direct participation at the microphone, if people submitting their comments in writing in advance and having those presented during public input period, perhaps by the corporate officer or something, as opposed to having them come in potentially soapboxing.
Yeah.
But actually delivering their, their comments, perhaps some kind of method like that could be used. And maybe that warrants a bit of a discussion later when the council procedure by law is actually on the agenda.
Yeah.
But, but otherwise, I'm happy to move forward the calendar, but I, I do think it's worth.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a good question that's been raised. And I think, yeah, as, as Mr. Boranowski has pointed out, and, and as both yourself and Counsel Ramadas suggest, let's have a conversation about, about that when we have an opportunity to, to make some change to that process. Anything else in council? With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Carrying right along, eleven point two.
Eleven point two. Your Worship and council, again, no visual presentation accompanying this report this evening. The report before council outlines the proposed deputy mayor schedule for twenty twenty-six. The schedule ensures that when the mayor is absent or unable to act, there is a designated councillor ready and authorized to fulfill the mayor's responsibilities. It also takes into account the upcoming twenty twenty-six local general election and the transition to the new council in November. Under the community charter in our council procedure by law, it is a legislative requirement that council assign the role annually, and we have traditionally done so in a bimonthly rotation. For twenty twenty-six, staff proposed the historical deputy mayor rotation, but are open to amend this rotation to a more balanced yet practical schedule. These appointments cover the period leading up to the end of October twenty twenty-six. However, given the historical rotation allocated councillor Nixon as deputy mayor for November and December, staff are open to amending this schedule with council direction. Taking into consideration the upcoming local general election, the newly elected council will appoint deputy mayor designations for November and December at the inaugural meeting in November. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Audia Kelly?
I can share May and June with, with Counsel Nixon.
Absolutely. Is he, please?
Thank you, Worship. You know, it's funny because I was thinking about that today and I really, really felt left out. I'm just joking. No, and in twenty twenty-two, when we were first elected, I had November and December. So that does get, give me four, four times of being deputy mayor as well in the four years. Right?
Right. Cause you got it.
Cause I had it first. Nobody else had that opportunity. So there you go. So I think it all.
So you're, you're okay.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Unless, unless somebody wants to not be here. It's all, it's all good. Thank you.
And thank you for your offer, Counsel Audia Kelly. With that, I'll ask our deputy, our, not our deputy, our corporate officer. So I apologize to read the recommendation.
The council appoint the following council members to serve as deputy mayor for the months of January and February twenty twenty-six. Counselor Hamilton, March and April twenty twenty-six, Counselor McKaisak, May and June twenty twenty-six, Counselor Audia Kelly, July and August twenty twenty-six, Counselor Ramadas, and September and October twenty twenty-six, Counselor Schussmuth.
Mover? Counsel Schussmuth, seconded by Counsel Audia Kelly. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And one more.
One more. Again, Your Worship and council, no visual presentation for me this evening. However, tonight I'm bringing forward our annual committee and board appointment report for twenty twenty-six. This process is something we do every December, but this year it also includes considerations related to the upcoming twenty twenty-six general election. As council knows, these appointments support our legislative responsibilities, strengthens our partnerships throughout Fernie and the region, and help maintain continuity in our strategic priorities. First, council is asked to appoint Mayor Milligan as M I A B C delegate for the twenty twenty-six U B C M Convention with Counselor Nixon serving as the alternate. Second, we are recommending that Mayor Milligan be appointed to the Tunahakan Basket Treaty Advisory Committee with Counselor Hamilton as the alternate. This continues our practice of assigning a representative annually at the request of V R D E K. Third, we are recommending appointments to two of our standing committees, the discretionary grants committee and the parcel tax review panel. Both of these committees are refreshed annually in accordance with the community charter. Fourth, we are asking council to confirm the existing appointments of Mayor Milligan and Counselor Audia Kelly to the O C P Task Force. And next, the report includes a series of appointments to external organizations and community partners. Council are asked to appoint liaisons to the five boards outlined in the recommendation to council. All of these appointments, with the exception of the O C P Task Force, would become effective beginning January twenty twenty-six. These roles would then be reconfirmed or reappointed by the newly elected council at the inaugural meeting on November third, twenty twenty-six. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel Audia Kelly?
Your Worship, I noticed in the discretionary grants, there's myself, Counselor Nixon, Counselor Schussmuth. And then in parcel tax, there's counselors Hamilton, McKaisak, and Nixon. So no, no Counselor Ramadas.
That's a good catch. Yeah.
So I wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Did you want one?
Well, I would have loved to be on the parcel tax subcommittee because I've done discretionary grants. I want to swap out if, if that's okay.
Perfect. Can we, maybe a man?
Who are we, sir?
Yeah, Counsel Nixon for Counsel Ramadas?
Okay.
Good catch. And then the, the external boards, I, I think it's healthy to kind of switch things up a little. Counsel Schussmuth, you had your hand up. I apologize. Is there, do councilors have a desire to act as liaison to any of those external boards? Counsel Audia Kelly?
I actually have very much enjoyed my time with tourism, but I think it would benefit greatly by another councillor taking that role on. And I would actually like to be the chamber liaison if no one has any objections.
Okay. Counsel McKaisak, you've got your hand up. Sorry.
I'd very much like to do the library.
Library?
Never done that one.
Okay. And Counsel Ramadas, you had your hand up as well.
Thanks, Your Worship. I'm sorry. I would, I would like to be on the arts council or, or on the tourist, well, actually more on the arts council.
Arts council?
Yeah.
Okay. Mic, microphone, sorry?
I'll, I'll do tourism.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Nixon. Counsel Schussmuth?
Seeing as there are fewer postings as there are people at this table, and seeing as I have two very, very young children and a very busy schedule, I'm happy to not represent any of those. Although I would like to consider myself our unofficial representative amongst all the charities that I spend my weeknights at meetings in. So.
Fair enough. And, no, I appreciate that perspective. You've got, yeah, you have a young family and it's, I can appreciate it. It's very challenging. Although that does mean that the Fernie Trails Alliance has stuck with me as their representative again. Unless Counsel Hamilton.
I would love to be with the Trails Alliance since I got bumped from the library.
Were you on the library already?
Yeah. That covers everyone, I think?
Yep.
Perfect. With that, I'll ask, did you catch all that?
I caught it.
Okay, I'll ask you to read the recommendation.
Staff recommendation, my own, yes. Staff recommendation is that council appoint Mayor Milligan as the M I A B C delegate to vote on behalf of council during the U B C M Convention in September twenty twenty-six with Counselor Nixon as alternate. That council appoint Mayor Milligan to the Tunahakan Basket Treaty Advisory Committee with Counselor Hamilton as a alternate. That council appoint Counselor Audia Kelly, Counselor Nixon, and Counselor Schussmuth to the, to the discretionary grants committee. The counselor, sorry, that council appoint Counselor Hamilton, Counselor McKaisak, and Counselor Ramadas to the parcel tax review panel. That council confirm the appointment of Counselor Audia Kelly and Mayor Milligan to the official community plan task force. That council appoint councillor Hamilton as council liaison to the Furney Trails Alliance Board. That council appoint Audia councillor Audia Kelly as council liaison to the Furney Chamber of Commerce Board. That council appoint councillor Ramadas as council liaison to the Furney and District Arts Council Board. That council appointment councillor McIsaac as council liaison to the Furney Heritage Library Board. That council appoint councillor Nixon as council liaison to the Tourism Furney Society Board, and that council make these appointments effective for a term beginning January twenty twenty six.
Mover. Counsel, how do you Kelly, seconded by councillor McIsaac. Any further discussion? Counsel Ramadas.
Thank you, worship. Uh, corporate officer, can you remind us like what's the next step? Like you will send out an email to all these people or?
That's correct. Yeah, I will send out an email to um all the boards to let them know that. Yep.
Thank you. With that, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Item eleven point four, I'm asking uh council to reconsider the issue of um solar, uh so um I apologize. There was an issue brought up at the last regular council meeting at which I wasn't in attendance, and we had a very small uh council present about um pre-wiring and pre-design for solar at the and the new fire hall project, which could potentially be um absorbed with the existing uh contingency for that project. And uh so I've asked uh to bring this after conversation with councillor Audia Kelly. Um, I've asked to bring this back to council um for conversation, and so I see Engineer Line has made her way to the uh podium and um perhaps I'll let her set the stage for this conversation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I cannot find my presentation. Pardon me for one moment.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, corporate officer, do I need to move the first motion uh before councillor? Be- before uh Engineer Line present. Okay. Uh, so I move that council moved to reconsider the vote on the motion adopted November uh adopted in November twelfth, twenty twenty five, that the motion that that the completed detailed design for the fire hall includes social solar panels. Moved by councillor McIsaac, seconded by councillor Hamilton. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. So you're opposed?
Yes.
Okay, councillor Ramadas is opposed. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your patience. It is just one slide, so this is pretty easy. Um, I'm here tonight to provide a recap and update on the considerations to ensure the fire hall could be solar ready. We've consulted with our electrical subconsultant and have adjusted the estimated costs as shown on the slide. Electrical does not require any additional budget for the design changes. Most solar of this scale uses microinverters with the panels that come at the time of the panel that are typically mounted outdoors on the roof and simply tie into an electrical panel in the electrical room. Furthermore, our B C hydrometer was already identified to be a dual passage meter, which means electricity can flow both ways. Thus, there are no additional design criteria needed to be solved uh for being ready by our electrical sub. On the construction side of things, I've increased the cost estimate by about three K to for the addition of a conduit from the roof to the electrical room. That's more money than needed, but at this cost estimate level. Uh, staff recommend carrying a total budget of thirty one thousand dollars for the design and construction is necessary to include solar panel readiness to the project. This element uh has not been included in the project to date, but it is likely that these design fees could be accommodated within the current project contingency, but of course not the installation of said panels. Uh, this would represent a delay of a few weeks to complete the design efforts. Uh, should council wish to prioritize this as a project element, staff are seeking direction on inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Engineer Line. And just for clarity, this is how would I put this? This is future-proofing the building so that it's solar-ready, not purchasing any solar panels at this juncture.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Counsel McIsaac.
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, I'm curious if um any consideration was given to, should we not do this? And then arrive in the future, several years down the road with increasing electricity costs and so on, a future council decides this would be a good opportunity to add solar or their alternative energy profile to that building. Do we know what it would cost then? Like, what does it cost to retrofit versus plan in advance?
If I may, it's items like that that we do not have a cost estimate for that because it's one of those an ounce of prevention equals a is better than a pound of cure type of idea. As um the bulk of this cost is in structural improvements so that the footings of the building have to be improved to for that weight on the ceiling, that would be a costly endeavor.
Once the building's already in place, the, yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, comes already Kelly.
Um, I just felt last time that we didn't have enough information. We also didn't have enough council members. But uh, Engineer Line, um I ha- so I just want to make sure I understood. So the wiring is actually already capable. It's the actual foundation and roof structure that wouldn't be. But um I am a little curious, and I'm thinking that it was just because you everyone on the team was striving to keep costs as low as possible. Is that why we didn't design this in the first place?
If I may, that's right. We were trying to keep costs as affordable as possible, and while this is a nice to have, it is not a strict requirement for a fire hall to operate.
Counsel Schusmann?
Thank you, Mayor Milligan. Um, there's a lot of presuppositions baked into this, in my opinion. If the aim here is to lower G H Gs, uh and I would assume that's why we would go with solar panels, um. I was kind of looking up the uh different G H G emissions on varying power sources and a quick Google search or even just looking at solar companies' websites and so such. I found that coal is like a thousand grams of CO2 per K W. Uh, hydro is twenty four, uh, wind is eleven, and solar in the average condition, i.e. just your base case, regular old solar, not somewhere cloudy, not somewhere great, is forty one, which actually means that were we to install solar to prevent greenhouse gas emissions, we would be taking the power used by that and displacing the power that would have otherwise been wind from Alberta or hydro from B C. So if the goal is to remove G H Gs, that's not doing anything. Um, it feels like we're going to spend money to appear to do something. Although in the scheme of things, the actual benefit, I I would say, is fairly negligible. If the goal is resilience, um, putting ourselves in the hands of intermittent power, we would still require some sort of backup generator. We would still require some sort of battery bank if we were to operate that for the purposes of resilience. Um, so I actually find um the idea of throwing solar panels on them just because solar panels are just good without thinking too much more about it is probably a bad idea. In the past, I've supported the installation of some solar panels. Uh, other people were paying and were offering us some money in that case, so I thought that was a great thing. But uh in this case, where we have a large and very expensive project, um, I don't think we should further complicate design or timelines or expense to the taxpayer. And keep in mind, this low cost here isn't the final cost. If eventually we do get solar panels, we're going to be paying for them. In addition to that, we'll be maintaining them. Are firefighters going to be up there sweeping the snow off of them? Just food for thought, but uh my vote remains unchanged.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Um, I'm curious. Sorry, Ms. Line, you you said this would potentially lead to some weeks delay. Is does that create any project risk at this juncture?
If I may, no.
No, okay, thank you. And I don't know, and I should know, but have we considered, like, we've got um E V chargers at City Hall, we've got E D E V chargers at our or a charger at our operations center chamber here. Are we considering E V chargers at at the fire hall?
If I may, no, we are not at this moment.
Okay. Um. Uh, any other questions, comments, observations? Uh, counselor, how do you Kelly?
I just wanted to ask about our HVAC again, and I apologize if I put you on the spot. I I just remember um director, we're um talking to us about that our HVAC had been reviewed by the engineers and found to be actually quite efficient. Um, and i- is it the standard um like gas forced air? Um, it's not like heat pumps, right? Okay.
If I may, yes, it's not heat pumps. It is a more traditional heating unit.
Thank you.
Follow up, your worship?
I'll follow. Yeah.
And as I recall, and if anyone can correct me if I'm recalling wrong, um, it was considered to have been quite energy efficient, what we are putting into the building. That what we have decided to do uh based on um budget and keeping things cost, but also, you know, being conscious of the environment.
If I may, yes, I believe like we would be providing what is like uh a good value at this time. Um, yeah.
Yeah, that that may for a building of this nature. Right, yeah, fair enough. Counsel Nixon.
Uh, thank you, worship. I said this last time, and I'm I'm a huge proponent of future-proofing this building. Uh, I support the design and in putting the solar panels on there. I think the one of the things that we're missing here is the actual size of the array and what kind of offset we're going to have for electricity for this in the long term for the next twenty five years. You know, I mean, that's the big unknown that we don't have in front of us as well, so. Um, just future-proofing this building is important to me, so I'm gonna vote in favor of this.
Yeah, I tend I tend to agree that we have an opportunity at this juncture to do that, and and if we if we hesitate, then you know, thirty years down the road, we've got, if if we need it, we've got a problem. Counsel Ramadas?
Thanks, your worship. I think I should uh I should explain myself why I voted no to this. It's like, what are we offsetting here? We last checked, our primary source of power is hydro in in B C. That's renewable. Um, in a different uh, in a different geographical zone, this may make sense. But here, I don't know, we are, we're not solving any problem here, so that's why I voted no against against this. And my second point is to councillor Schusmann's uh point here again is as is, this is one of the most divisive issues that we have dealt in the last six months. Uh, I don't want to add any more complexity to this uh project, which is already far too complicated for my liking. And if you add yet another uh project item to this, this will just get even more uh problematic. And uh just on principle, I am, I oppose uh looking at contingency funds as something that we can go and grab it even before the project has even started. So all in all, it's it's going after a problem that doesn't exist. It's poor project planning. And thirdly, this will just add more complications, and that's why I voted no.
Counsel Hamilton?
Thank you. Well, in in direct response to councillor Ramadas's three points there, you know, maybe it is poor project planning, but it's proper future planning. We are adding a little bit more complexity, but it's structural integrity too. Um, we, you know, this is building is supposed to be resilient for the future. We are building a future-proof building. Um, to to the comment about G H D, uh, yeah, it's it is potential, there is the potential that we're not actually offsetting any G H Ds. But to councillor Nixon's point, um, we don't know what the potential future array on this is. This could actually become a net positive cash flow, positive function for the city if it is a big enough array and it's uh producing more energy than the building requires. I know my solar installation on my house isn't big, but it covers all of my family's needs um in this environment with the snow loads, with everything, so. I'm still very much in support of this. I'm glad that it's coming back for further discussion and I hope uh hope to that we continue that down this direction.
Thank you. Counsel Schusmann?
I'd just like to point out that the majority of solar panels are manufactured in China, which tends to burn coal without even much scrubbers or cleaning at all. Um, the service life and power statistics on solar panels seem to put them at, they tend to last twenty to thirty years, twenty five seems a good benchmark. Um, and that they take in our climate about three or four years before they've generated enough power to replace the power it took to make them. So for a twenty five-year solar array that we purchase, we're essentially guaranteeing that there's four years of coal-fired power being burnt at that same level. Um, considering that, just as it stands, our base load off the grid here is wind and solar, which are the lowest G H G bar nuclear, um, I just see no point. And again, as to the resilience of it, I don't really imagine that without some pretty hefty batteries and some other auxiliary power, we'll be running an entire fire department off of solar power. I just don't see that being feasible.
Counsel Nixon?
Thank you, worship. Um, last year, uh, British Columbia brought in one point three billion dollars worth of imported one point three billion dollars worth of electricity because of our drought. So that's a problem. So I see that as the main problem. I see this is just gonna diversify the opportunities that we have for our facility, and I think that we should continue with it. So.
Thank you.
So there.
Counsel Ramadas?
Sure. Uh, to be clear, uh, your worship, this was my day job doing decarbonization in a mine site. I have done the math on all these things. It is not as easy as people are hinting out this to be. Um, and another source of revenue, it's uh, it's going to be like pennies. Uh, anyway, I'll I'll stop my argument at that. But I'm also curious, like, uh, councillor, why did you vote yes to this when you have all the statistics at at your fingertip here? Yourself, cons.
Voted yes to to which? No, I'm, I voted no at the last meeting and all vote no at this meeting. I voted yes to bringing it as an item to discuss.
I'm sorry, your worship. I I missed the procedural uh uh steps here. I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, councillor McIsaac?
Uh, thank you, worship.
I've called the vote after this comment.
Okay, um, I guess what I want to say is, I think the points that are being raised about their current status of things with regards to the reduction of greenhouse gas, um, the small increase in costs and so on, these are, these are very valid points. The comparisons, these types of comparisons to other powers and their savings and so on have been made by those people who have resisted moving to alternative energy for twenty five years. And yet it keeps on happening, and now worldwide solar panel energy is now cheaper than any other form of energy because people refuse to stop moving forward with the process. It is absolutely true that it is not the most greenhouse gas-friendly solar uh power system. That is true. But it's our electrical needs and output are not static. We are building a fifty-year building in hopes. And the time is going to continue to march on. Electricity, electricity and its production is going to change and get more expensive and so on. This is a zero point two percent increase in the overall budget that's absorbable within contingency to create an opportunity to stave off changes that would be worse. It's it's a relatively small thing, and I would remind council that we have long had um a um a policy resolution for council that we will look at projects with a climate eye. That we will be looking at, where can we? will be looking at where can we make and implement changes that will offset or respond to climate changes that are ongoing. Whether or not this is the ideal one, we have to start doing that, right? We do have to start putting our choices here where decisions have been. So I think this is a good place to start. I like this idea, I like being ready to take the opportunity.
Thank you. Well, I said I would call the vote, so if it's new information, we can, I can entertain more questions or comments? I'm sorry? Could you turn your microphone on, please?
Absolutely, I can turn my microphone. You are presupposing what you'll be thinking and what we'll be saying here.
I am doing nothing of the sort.
Yeah, but...
I just asked, is it new information?
Yeah, it is new information.
Okay, then say that, and then...
Let's do that, okay.
Counselor Ramadas, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you. I lost my train of thought here, because I will come back later, sorry.
Counselor Schu Smith?
Just a brief rebuttal that, thank you, Mayor Milligan, just looking at it with the GHG lens, it's actually a detriment as opposed to the wind, which is being built out and the hydro, which is the bulk of our province's power.
Counselor Ramadas?
Thanks, Your Worship, I'm sorry. I just remembered what I wanted to say. Yes, of course, taking actions mitigating climate change is definitely in our purview, and Counselor McKaisak is absolutely right in pointing to that. We're already doing that with active transportation projects that we've had in the last two years, that's actually going after those kind of issues here. So this, in my mind, feels like a low-impact, almost, shouldn't say this, but this is almost like a vanity project in my mind. If you are really serious about climate change issues, there are far bigger things that you can be going after. And I just want to make it clear that I'm not against these kind of longer-term activities that actually help us in climate change mitigation, but this particular project isn't one of them.
Thank you. And with that, Counselor Adie Kelly?
Can I just ask, Your Worship, if staff is aware of any fire halls that have solar panels, and what, like, what a ballpark cost would be to put an array on a large building? Because I felt last time, Your Worship, that I didn't have enough data, and one of the things was obviously budget-related. So I don't want to put staff on the spot, and if you don't, that's perfectly acceptable, I just am curious.
If I may, as this question was for solar readiness and not an hire of installing a solar array, we did not investigate that. However, there is solar panel designers willing to do preliminary solar designs that would give a final loading cost and estimate electricity production, and they can do that for free. We just have not pursued that at this point. And no, unfortunately, I do not know of any other fire halls. We also didn't pursue down that road either.
Thank you.
Thanks, Engineer Lyon.
And with that, I'll call the question. Actually, I have to read the reconsidered motion, I apologize. That the completed detailed design for the fire hall include solar panels. Moved, mover? Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, and you... Sorry? Further discussion?
Well, just to comment on the motion as read, that this fire hall includes solar panels, or is solar panel, designed solar panel ready?
Yeah, I think that's an important clarification, solar panel ready. Okay, so you're proposing an amendment to...
Yes, I would like to propose an amendment to the wording.
And could you?
That the fire hall design includes solar panel readiness into the 100% cost design.
Design, yeah. That work for you? Moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor Nixon. So I will ask for a vote on the motion as amended. At the amendment, yeah, sorry. All those in favor? Myself, Counselor Schu Smith, Counselor Nixon, Counselor Adie Kelly, Counselor McKaisak. All those opposed, Counselor Ramadas. I'll now ask for a mover and a seconder, no, sorry, we had a mover and a seconder for the, I apologize, vote on the motion as amended. All those in favor? Counselor Nixon, Counselor Hamilton, Counselor McKaisak, and myself. All those opposed? Counselor Schu Smith, Counselor Adie Kelly, and Counselor Ramadas. Thank you. Item 14.1, correspondence. This is a request for a letter of support from the Ferney Single Track 3. Anybody? Any comments, any? Seeing none, I'll ask our corporate officer to read the recommendation.
Okay, the proposed resolution for Council consideration is that Council provide a letter of support to Ferney Single Track 3 for their formal request for trail use permission to recreation sites and trails BC, and that the mayor and corporate officer prepare a letter of support and sign on behalf of the city of Ferney.
A mover? Counselor Schu Smith, and seconded by Counselor Ramadas? Discussion? Counselor Nixon?
Thank you, Worship. I know that I've done a ton of these races before, and I think they're great, and I think it's great for Ferney and all the riders have a great time, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just curious about the number of riders that are going to be in the race, the impact on the trail. I mean, there's none of those details inside this. There's also the partners. I am not sure that they have the FTA being their official partner or not, but it lists that here. I would be looking for some clarification, but, I mean, this is just in correspondence as well, so I don't, I don't, I don't know. Before I give a letter of...
Yeah, yeah. Counselor Ramadas?
Similar thoughts, Your Worship. In fact, I was relying on you, Counselor Nixon, because you know these things better than many of us here. So I was just wondering, like, is this, is this a not-for-profit organization or a for-profit organization? What's the makeup of the trust? Like, I have no information to make an informed decision here.
I feel a little bit that way myself, and I wonder, you know, particularly based on the questions that you've raised, Counselor Nixon, I suspect we should defeat this motion and kick the correspondence back to the proponent with those questions and get a bit more detail from them before we provide a letter of support. Does that make sense to Council? Counselor Ramadas, and then Counselor McKaisak?
If they saw which, they could also come here as a delegation.
As a delegation, yeah. Counselor McKaisak?
Thank you, Worship. But I wouldn't mind if, when this comes back, a bit of discussion about support for nonprofit versus for-profit business. I don't, I'm not sure if I understand where, it doesn't appear to me that a letter of support is necessarily compromising our separation from business and so on, that's required. And so I wouldn't mind hearing from staff whether or not there is anything that we should be concerned about with that, as far as for-profit or not-for-profit. I'm sure it's probably not, but I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, I'd like to understand that separation myself, because I know there are a number of not-for-profits that we provide letters of support with, we have a sense of their impact to the community, the numbers that they draw. And then there are a couple of organizations that we also support that feel a little gray into that question, whether their business, they're for-profit or not-for-profit. And so I think a conversation both with this proponent and amongst ourselves with supportive staff to understand where that line is would be helpful. Counselor Nixon?
Thank you, Worship. You know, and kudos to Mr. Savage for getting this in in November, because the race is at the end of June, so there's lots of time to answer his questions. So it's good for him, that's, usually we get these type of correspondence.
Yeah, that's fair. Yeah. With that in mind, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is unanimously defeated with an idea of going back to the proponent and asking some questions. Do you, corporate officer, need any further direction, a resolution to that effect?
That would be good.
Okay.
You wish it.
How about the Council direct staff to to correspond with the correspondence? To correspond with Single Track 3?
Yep.
And answer some of the outstanding questions?
Okay.
I will move that, is there a seconder? Counselor Hamilton, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to reports from Council members, and I'm not going to put Parry on the spot. I'll let you do, I'll let you go last. Counselor McKaisak?
Oh, thank you, Worship. Microphone? Thank you. Not too much to report, despite the fact that I feel like it has been quite some time since I've actually submitted a council report. We've had some late nights where we've skipped them, and then I was away. I guess the one thing that I did want to talk about a little bit, and I don't know if this has been brought up by other councils at previous meetings, but I did want to talk a little bit about the AKBLG and UBCM conventions and so on that have gone on. And there may be people in our community that don't have a good idea about what our relationship with those organizations, what the value is for them. So I'm currently on AKBLG and currently on the UBCM board, and the AKBLG, which is the Association of Kootenay Boundary Local Government, represents all the local governments within the Kootenays, and there's a substantial number of them. And we spend most of our time having conversations with member communities about their issues. And what we try to seek out is where we have issues which are common amongst all those places, and bring forward those as resolutions to UBCM. And the reason why we have that broken up in different areas in the province, and that's because different regions have different needs and they have different problems. The people who live in the lower mainland don't have the same types of medical transportation issues, for example, that people in the Kootenays have. And that's a constant topic of conversation. At the UBCM side, this is the representative organization for the entire province of all the municipalities, and it deals directly with the province around issues that are provincial-wide for municipalities. And these tend to be pretty large-scale ones, like infrastructure, funding, and so on. And I think why I feel it's important for me to be there, especially as somebody from the Elk Valley, is getting, having that opportunity at the table to bring a rural community viewpoint to the discussion, because there, as you, as we all know, there's a giant sucking sound in the lower mainland of attention, right? They get money, they get the attention, and people paid. And by, we now have four representatives, from within AKBLG, four Kootenay representatives sitting at the UBCM board, with the opportunity to speak directly about rural lens issues. And they can be anywhere, anything from talking about power distribution, engagement with large-scale infrastructure projects, environmental issues, et cetera, et cetera. And so there, I think, I don't know that people know, understand that very well, but that's why we go. We go so that we have the opportunity to speak to the province about our specific issues. And those of us that are on the board there use that leverage, that same opportunity. All the costs associated with me being there are borne by those organizations, not by the community. So it's just my time and just that opportunity to bring our communities and our regions' concerns to that table. So the conventions are a better opportunity for a bunch of us to go and meet directly with ministers and plead our case for certain types of things, and those are good, as well as the engagement with other speakers, opportunity to learn about housing issues and wide variety of things. So those things are valued, too. But I just wanted to speak a little bit of what I've been sort of spending my time on as well. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. And I do note that today I received two response letters from ministers, and I apologize, I haven't sent them yet to Council, but I'll do that tomorrow from our last meetings at UBCM. Counselor Ramadas?
Thanks, Your Worship. It's been a while, so I had to jog my memory as to what I did for the last two months, but only three things came up that I wanted to highlight. One was the Remembrance Day celebration. I had the opportunity to go to the high school. I'm guessing in your absence, Counselor Nixon and I were there, along with our fire crew, was an excellent event. The youth leadership at that high school was phenomenal, like, the whole, the whole function was so well put, I thought it was run by a few professionals, like, well done, all the youth. And I think our future is in good hands here. And also, I learned a lot, that was also excellent. Second thing I wanted to highlight was, again, I don't know how many more meetings I'll be attending at the Chamber as a liaison officer, so if whatever I attended last was my last meeting, I really thank the Chamber of Commerce for giving me the opportunity to be at their table. Learned a lot there. It was, it was shorter than I expected, like, if I was, as a liaison officer, for a longer period of time, we could have achieved a few more things. And that was actually on my, on the top of my mind here, Your Worship, when I agreed to swap with another organization, there is like a few things that I really wanted to achieve as a liaison officer at Chamber, and I couldn't finish those tasks. So anyway, if our partner organizations are listening to this meeting, my advice to them is, if counselors are available and we are spending considerable amount of time at their table, just grab us and use our resources to advance some of the work that we are doing together. And I feel like there was a little bit of a missed opportunity there, and I, again, it's nobody's fault, it's just the fact that we started late in our term making this happen, and that one year almost felt like the Chamber was trying to figure out what they need from me, and I was trying to figure out what they need from me, and we ended up spending the entire year not advancing as much as I wanted to. So anyway...
Sorry to interrupt, but I would encourage you to talk to your counterpart, who's now stepping into your shoes to make sure there's that handoff, and maybe we can realize some of those projects.
You bet, Your Worship, I'll make that happen, I'll have some really good notes for Counselor Adie Kelly there. And last but not least, I attended the BBB last weekend, and thanks for Simon Holmes and all the folks from the Chamber to have put together a great party there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, so I guess I had my last library meeting on Monday, last Monday. Couple things to share to the community. Make sure you remember Christmas by the Book is December 20th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., as well, the SEWS, SEWS, in the basement, will be starting back up in the new year, I think. Just check their website for those exact dates and times. Still, I'm still always amazed at the number of people that come out to Council cafes, new people. It's always great meeting new people, having old friends come for the first time, or old neighbors come for the first time, and chatting about many of their issues around... many of their issues around the community and the city. As Councillor Mackazek was alluding to about AKBLG, I too am on the board, and we had a board meeting a little while ago. I'm also the chair of the Resolutions Committee, so I'm going to be starting to remind everybody sitting around this table. If we have any resolutions we want to submit, we need to start workshopping them, putting those ideas together. And I'm happy to help anybody wordsmith and craft them if they've got anything pressing that they want to bring forward for advocacy at our regional table, but also at the provincial table. And lastly, yeah, last week was the BBB at the Ferny Tap House, and it was a lovely time.
Thank you. Councillor Schusmith?
Thank you, Mayor Milligan. I might take you up, Councillor Hamilton, on that offer to help wordsmith something. Yeah, there's a handful of things here. My apologies for missing the BBB. My daughters have been going through some varying sicknesses at their age, as they do. But on a sad note, I would like to express my condolences to the family and coworkers and friends of the worker who passed at Elkview earlier this month. I wasn't great friends with the guy, although I had worked with him and around him several times, and I have worked for his father a lot. So it's a sad thing. I hope we don't have to say these types of things too much more, but condolences to the family. And there is a GoFundMe out on Facebook, being arranged by some friends of mine to benefit his family and his children to ease the transition here. Happier note, don't know if I can handle that emotionally, switching. Ski joring is coming up. We've been getting the grounds ready. I say we, I helped out a little while ago, but the ski joring, planks and ponies people are pretty self-contained. They're really stepping up, and they're doing some great things, so plan on that in the new year. It's going to be fun. Phila Slay Day, the Lions Club will be partnering up with the Red Apple to raise a bunch of food for the Food Bank, and I think they do a matching donations type of thing. I'll be out there grilling hot dogs, and Santa will be there as well. And congratulations to the Legion for a well-run Remembrance Day. It was very well-attended. I definitely enjoyed hanging out and chatting afterwards, was learned quite a lot. And that's about all I have. Thank you, Mayor Milligan.
Thank you. Councillor Nixon?
Thank you, Worship. Yep, went to the council cafe last week. It's always good to see nice people that come out or people that give us some feedback. That's really nice. I was also at the BBB at the Tap House, so thanks to Simon House on last Wednesday. And then lastly, Saturday, we, in my unofficial role as Medical Staff Association liaison, I feel like I was, I attended the Welcome Skate and Pop Lunch, and it was, it was really, it was really heartwarming to see all of those new physicians coming into this community. We have eight new doctors that are joining. We had it in this room here, and we had all their little bios. Dana Stimson did a great job. She had it, all the bios linked up all around the room. I'm sad that they're gone now. But yeah, there's some great new people here, and three Americans, matter of fact. And they're coming up from Montana to come and work here in British Columbia. So recruitment and retention is thanks to Dr. Paul Michael and his, his very robust recruitment system. Let's just say that. So kudos to them. That's it.
Thank you. Councillor Arty Kelly? Oh, Councillor Ramadas?
I got a follow-up question, Your Worship. Wasn't there an invite from Mr. Paul?
Michael?
Yeah, Michael.
Dr. Bob Whitehead, yeah.
Is that, is that done or is it in the future?
It was on Saturday here. Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, and it was, to your point, it was quite something, eight new physicians. It was, wow. I don't know if we want to brag about that. It feels
The term that Dr. Lowen used was an embarrassment.
Embarrassment of riches.
Because compared to other parts of the province, which you, you find out at UBCM, the other parts would be, you know, dying to have one doctor, two new doctors. And here we have, I mean, thanks to our, our ski hill, thanks to our mountain bike trails, thanks to the amenities that we have, thanks to our well-run city. We have, we are a gem in East Kootenays for recruitment and retention of physicians.
Yeah.
If you can live anywhere, why wouldn't you live here? So.
Thank you.
Sorry for that add-on.
No. Councillor Arty Kelly?
Thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, I was really sorry to have missed that. And I mean, that is fantastic, but don't tell the others. My husband actually is the beneficiary of one of those new physicians, and we're super thankful for that. I thank you, Councillor Schusmith, for expressing condolences to the family of the worker who was lost. Many of us know the family, watched them grow up, and it's heartbreaking. It really is. And the community, thank you to all the people that have rallied around the family and wrapped them in your support. There is a GoFundMe. There's also a gift card donation drop-off at number three for other items that maybe the family would need. Food, gas, takeout, anything that can support them. So thank you kindly to the community. Remembrance Day, I think, is just so special in Ferny. I think our Legion does an exemplary job, Jennifer and her board, and all of the people who have served that participate in it is our Senate half. I personally think it's the most beautiful one of anywhere. So thank you to them. Tourism, thank you so much for having me as your liaison. I greatly appreciated it. The, the work that's done by the tourism folks is, is very good. They are continually thinking out of the box. They are, they've really helped to develop Ferny into a world-class destination, and they're to be commended for that, and I really appreciate having worked with them, and I hope Councillor Nixon equally enjoys his time. And I'm super looking forward to working with the Chamber. I think there's a lot of synergy between the organizations. I think we've talked about economic development at this table, and I'd love to talk to you, Councillor Ramadas, about continuing your good work. And then I wanted to just say one final thing was, I too got to attend the BBB at the Tap House. It was really good, had so many good conversations there, and I'm thankful to the Chamber and the different businesses that host. So thank you very much to everyone, and thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you. Parry, anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor Milligan. I'd just like to say that I had the opportunity to attend the Remembrance Day ceremony in Ferny with council, and it was an amazing ceremony, and I've been enjoying getting to learn a lot as with my position as youth councillor.
Thank you, and we're glad to have you. Thank you for that. And for me, to those councillors who raised it, thank you. You know, having worked in my, my, almost my entire career in the mining industry, I know how devastating these things are to communities and to the friends and coworkers of the individual and most of all, the family. And so thank you for marking that. It is a terrible thing. On a happier note, as others have said, yeah, council cafe, we have another one coming up this Monday, so would encourage, or Monday, December 1st, encourage people to attend that. We also have our council town hall tomorrow evening, so reminding folks of that and ensure that they get out. It's an opportunity to hear the community's voice here in this room. I also attended the physician welcome party and was really, really impressed with the number of young physicians and the number of children they have. Holy cow, the room was packed. So it's really exciting new energy into our community, so that's really fantastic. This Saturday night is the holiday kickoff at the downtown holiday kickoff. So looking forward to that and hope to see people come out. It's a great way to start the holiday season. And it's nice to see snow, so that'll be nice if we have some snow on the ground for that. And December 14th, just as a heads up, a little bit in the future, the CPKC Holiday Train is coming to Ferny this year, and the musical act is the Bear Naked Ladies. So that should be, that should be good fun. So thank you, council, for that. It has been a long time since we've had council reports, so it was nice to get back to that. And with that, I will read the following resolution and ask for a mover and a seconder. That the meeting be closed to the public pursuant to section ninety-one sub B of, sorry, ninety, sub one, sub B of the community charter. As a subject matter being considered at this time relates to personal information about an identifiable individual who is being considered for a municipal award or honor or who has offered to provide a gift to I should get you to read these. A gift to the municipality on condition of anonymity. Mover? Councillor Hamilton, seconded by Councillor Mackazek. Any discussion? All those in favor? And with that, we'll have